Off tonight's hearing, I just want to say a couple of words as background. So the Child Care Development Fund is Oregon's major source of funding for childcare. It pays for childcare assistance programs for families like employment-related daycare. It also funds our childcare licensing system and supports for childcare providers, such as our childcare resource and referral agencies. And the state plan serves as Oregon's application for these federal funds. So the state plan describes everything from how childcare assistance programs work and their eligibility to outlining state licensing requirements for childcare programs. And a lot of the state plan is also really about how we are following all of the federal rules that go along with these funds. And so the federal government uses the state plan, again, not only as our application for these federal funds, but then monitors the state according to the state plan to make sure that we are following all of the rules. Do you want to go to the next slide, please? So Oregon is required to submit a new state plan every three years. The final plan is due on June 30th, and it will go into effect on October 1st of this year. The draft plan was posted on April 1st on the Early Learning Division website, and you can provide comments on the plan on our website until June 2nd. So if you have additional feedback that you didn't have a chance to share with us tonight or additional thoughts after tonight's public hearing, you can go to our website and submit those comments there. And we will post a summary of the comments and feedback that we received on our website after the comment period ends. As I mentioned earlier, a recording of tonight's public hearing will also be posted on the website. And we will be using your comments and feedback as we draft the final revisions to the plan. And we're also hoping to put together a summary of all the feedback that we're hearing from you and from others as part of this process to be able to share that back. Can we go to the next slide? My colleague, Remy Watts, will let you know when it's your turn to speak. Each person will have five minutes for their comments. Remy will let you know when you have one minute left and when your five minutes is up. And again, we appreciate you being here tonight to give us feedback and are really looking forward to hearing your comments. And with that, Remy, do you want to call the first person?
Sure. So we have quite a list this evening, which is, like I said, very exciting. So we're going to just go in order of when you signed up to submit testimony. So we're going to start with Ariselli. If you can take yourself off of mute, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and we would love to hear your feedback. Ariselli, if you're there, we can go to you. Otherwise, I will move on in the list, and we can come back to you when you're ready. Okay, we will come back to Ariselli. And it looks like we're missing the next person, Lori Goodwin. If you're here, unmute yourself. I don't think I see you. So we're going to move on to Catherine Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, and thanks for the opportunity. So I'm Catherine Brown. I live in Pendleton. And for many years, I have been concerned about the childcare shortage here. About 14 years ago, my family moved here with a one-and-a-half and two-and-a-half-year-old. They are obviously now teenagers. But I'm a business owner of the East Argonia newspaper. So I've seen the shortage from the perspective of being a parent and as being a business owner and just someone who's very involved in the community. Today, I'm representing the Pendleton Children's Center, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our mission is to build a childcare center and preschool for at least 150 children between birth and five years to address the severe shortage of childcare within the Pendleton School District, which encompasses all of Pendleton and the Confederated Tribes of the Yumitilla Indian Reservation. Our chief concern with the draft plan as it's written is that we know from just years of looking at this in this area that we cannot significantly build capacity without first building the physical infrastructure for childcare, meaning the buildings for childcare centers and preschools. Back in the early 20th century, as K-12 public education became the norm in the United States, the first thing we did as a nation was build public schools. And without those buildings, the public education system as we know it would not exist. It's now time to turn our attention to creating the infrastructure to support the younger children who need a safe and nurturing and educational environment in which to thrive while their parents are at work. And this and the childcare shortage in all of rural Oregon is definitely a workforce issue, as well, as you probably know. We urge you to help communities build the childcare infrastructure they need, because without it, all your efforts to increase the capacity for early care and education will have the same result we've seen over the last decade, which is meaning little or no progress in reducing the childcare shortage at all. I have looked at literally every available building in Pendleton over the last 10 years with an eye to can we do childcare in this building? And I've looked at many buildings, including churches and other commercial buildings that are empty with a childcare licensing specialist. And every time, there were just so many reasons why an existing building could, would not work without massive remodeling. And so I've kind of, I've come to the realization, we need to build a new center. And in order to fill the capacity, the 150, for 150 children that we know from our surveys that is necessary, that really means building a new building. And that's going to cost six or seven million dollars. And I think it is well worth it and will pay dividends for many years to come. So I really urge you to look, go through that draft plan again and see where you can't reallocate some funds to the actual creation of the buildings, because it's sort of like the field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. And our board is really quite convinced that that is the case when it comes to early care and preschool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Ariselli. I'm asking you to unmute right now. Do you see anything on your end? Otherwise, Courtney has been so helpful to put the call-in information in the chat. If you're able to see that, so you can call in to this meeting and speak that way. Okay, we'll give you a few minutes to sort out those technical issues on your end. And now, let's see, we're missing a couple more people. Let's keep on going down the list. I don't see Renee Lucy Shail. I don't see Renee Moore, Ruth Cromer, Dee Hayward, Erin Halgren, Kim Engel. And what do you know, we're at Courtney Halstein.
Hi. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, great, awesome. I will go ahead and get started. So thank you all for the opportunity to provide comments on the draft plan. For the record, my name is Courtney Halstein. I'm the political director for Family Forward Oregon. We are an organization that organizes mothers and caregivers and prioritizes changing systems to better support care and caregivers. And as COVID-19 has made even more apparent, Oregon's childcare system is in desperate need of change. So we have been working closely with the agency, with lawmakers and other organizational partners on legislation that will respond to the childcare crisis in Oregon, organizing our state's response and begin to the process of building the system our state's family and providers need. And in that case, for this session, that looks like House Bill 3073. And while I know that the state plan is really actually more like an application and not necessarily a visionary document, if you will, there are two observations that were very clear to me after reading this draft. So one, this draft plan does not seem to reflect the direction in which the state is going in light of House Bill 3073 to streamline governance for early learning and childcare programs and to reform the ERDC program. And two, that many of the punitive subsidy policies and barriers to access the childcare subsidy that we, you know, where we hear complaints over and over again from parents and providers are state choices. They're not federal requirements. Or they're an extreme narrowing in of a very kind of general federal rules that really hurt families and and prevent families who could really benefit and access from the program be able to really use it. So I do plan, it's been a bit of a hectic day, so I do plan on submitting actual formal comments and writing later on, but I do just want to quickly highlight a few places of feedback. So first, on the topic of punitive subsidy policies, it is our recommendation that the agency should pull together a work group soon to work on redefining several terms used to determine eligibility for use of the subsidy program. So for example, Oregon chooses to limit participation due to a narrow definition of work and no access for parents that need care due to school or training. So these definitions around the purpose of childcare are narrower than what the federal government requires. And they should be redefined to reflect, to reflect the needs of actual low-income families. And consideration should be made regarding policies that disrupt childcare and terminate coverage prior to a child's guaranteed one-year subsidy, such as a three-month limit for job search or leave. So reexamining this in the state plan and the corresponding policies is necessary to ensure that this is a subsidy for families in need. Second, currently, a subsidy is allocated on an hourly timeframe. So limiting subsidy to work hours and no more than an hour for commute time limits a parent's ability to access all providers. And it actually dissuades providers from participating in the subsidy program. So if a family qualifies for 32 hours a week of childcare, they'll be unable to access a full-time early care program, because they likely can't actually afford the additional cost to cover that, what the subsidy doesn't cover. So this puts subsidy families at a disadvantage when looking for a provider who will, who will agree to take a child attending limited hours when they can just as easily hold that spot open for a family who's seeking full-time care. So we should just provide families with the full-time care, which will increase access to quality early care programs that they deserve. Three, we believe that the state should actually examine the verification processes and documentation required to qualify for the subsidy. So onerous verification of hours with employers and personal identifying documents can be barriers for families, especially immigrant communities. So redefining what documents and processes are used to verify subsidy eligibility can actually help speed up eligibility determination, which according to the draft plan, currently, on average, can, it can take like 45 days for eligibility to be determined, which is a really long time when a family is waiting to see if they can access childcare. So we actually think that moving more toward, you know, between state records, right? So through the Employment Department, we already know, we already have a lot of employment records and information about people in the state and a self-attestation. This could really simplify things on the agency, really cut down on the eligibility time and just make it easier for, for families to use. Okay, continuing on four. Sorry, I'm probably going to run out of my five minutes. In specific to TANF policies, there are two places in particular concern around the definition of appropriate care and reasonable distance when it comes to commute time. So right now, ODHS defines appropriate childcare in, I won't read the whole thing out loud, but in a, in a way where it actually excludes the consideration of parent choice or the comfort level of a parent in, in looking at a childcare program. So from the state's perspective, as long as it meets health, safety, provider requirements, and it accommodates the work schedule and and developmental needs, then, then the state, you know, deems like that's appropriate. That's appropriate for that child, and you should just accept that slot. But it doesn't really take into account like parent choice or just, you know, the, the level of comfort that a parent may feel in leaving their child at a certain care setting. And then reasonable distance. So it, this is when it comes to the calculating weekly hour or benefit hours and commute time. So it essentially, the program only allows for an hour of commute time, unless it's customary for commute times to be different in certain parts of the state. I just think that this is something the state probably should just kind of stay out of. I think commute times can vary drastically for different families, based even in the same geographic area. And I think that this is just a really good example of a policy that's aimed at reducing fraud. But what it actually does is it just creates an overly punitive system that doesn't actually work for families that it aims to serve. I also wanted to note as well, too, that, you know, core purpose of CCDF is to promote parental choice and to give parents who are using the subsidy a competitive advantage when they're out looking for childcare. However, our payment rates for providers for subsidy slots is, is very low. And according to the state plan, it says that we are, most Oregon providers are kind of meeting the current benchmark of 75th percentile of the market rate. However, there's a table that shows the base rates for what I believe is Multnomah County in section 432. And according to that, not a single age category in a single care setting is actually even meeting that base 75th percentile market rate. And so we've, this, this is just very concerning. Childcare providers are already amongst the lowest-paid workers in our state, and we've got to, we have got to figure this out and get higher, higher pay and benefits for these workers. Finally, technical, a kind of technical question that I think just needs some additional verification or clarification, I mean. So the CCDF rules state that eligibility cannot be terminated due to any time-limited absence from work for an employed parent due to such reasons as need to care for a family member or because of their own illness. However, in the state plan, it, to fulfill this requirement, they only mention maternity and medical leave, not time to care for sick family members. So I think just some further clarification there on like what the actual, what ODHS's actual policy is around that would be helpful, just to make sure we're in line with the CCDF rules. And also that the, what we're practicing is actually in line with our own OFLA law and what subsequently will be our Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Law as well, too, once that is fully implemented. So just some clarification on that section as well would be great. And that was a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. And if I can make one comment, following up with the written testimony would be really amazing for that one. Thank you so much for giving us some feedback.
I knew that Ariselli, I hope I said that correctly, was having trouble with speaker earlier. Just wanted to see if you were able to call in or that's been resolved.
I'm going to ask them to unmute. Ariselli, if you're having trouble logging into the Zoom with the phone number and all of that jazz, we are also available for written testimony. And my email, I'll put it in the chat once again so that we definitely have my email in the chat. Everyone is welcome to email me their testimony. Okay. So I guess we are going down the list. And the next person that I see on the list who is here is Brad Russell. If you would unmute yourself and provide your comments, we would love to hear them.
Hi, can you see and hear me? All right, great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity. I must apologize. I got a little lost in where to send my letter. But Remy Watts, I just sent it to you about 30 minutes ago. And so if there's someone else I should be properly addressing it to and sending it to, please let me know. Just a few comments from that letter is that, one, my name's Brad Russell. I'm the director of YMCA in Medford, serving the Rogue Valley. 12 towns. We work with four different school districts, 17 different pods of emergency childcare for the last year. And I just learning about, you know, this plan being revised just, you know, a week ago. So just eager and excited to be able to provide some feedback. And I understand just from the opening here that we might be able to have that continued opportunity through June 30th. But just a few quick thoughts within the short time I have is, one is that, you know, typically, the rules, in my opinion, have been really geared toward like kind of infants and toddlers, those kind of earlier ages. And, you know, YMCA's, and we partner closely with the Boys and Girls Clubs, provide a lot of services for school-age youth. And so we, we're really wanting to make sure that we have a chance to kind of review and add some input on the school-age rules. There's a series of questions that I included in my letter, and I'll just rattle a couple of them off right now, knowing that this isn't really set for a conversation and a question and answer period. But, you know, for example, you know, will the current licensing requirements, because they are geared more toward the early care, will that disincentivize school-age care operators from, say, accepting DHS vouchers? Another question is licensing inspectors that are trained to differentiate, will they be trained to differentiate between the early care and the school-age care? Is there a way for non-recorded programs to qualify for the ERDC, the employment-related daycare? Does professional development offer options for training for school-age providers different than the preschool? So you can see that my theme here is just, you know, kind of the difference between the preschool age and the school age. Lastly, just in this list of questions that I have, is that, you know, the National YMCA Office, the National Boys and Girls Club Office, as well as Oregon ASK, have dozens of professional development opportunities for school-aged youth staff, staff training, that we'd be, you know, willing to, you know, help offer and include in this process. I just, you know, again, just trying to, you know, offer more resources. A few other questions, but I guess I would just wrap up with that. I would hope there could be some work groups or a work group. So maybe there's a chance for just a little bit more dialogue around some of the specifics. Our group with the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and Oregon ASK have started to really go through and look at all of the detail. So it's just our hope that we could have, you know, just a little more dialogue with the appropriate, you know, staffer or folks that are putting it together. Thanks so much for the time.
Thank you so much, Brad. And yeah, I received your letter. So we definitely, yeah, we've got your verbal testimony. We've got your written testimony. And yeah, there's no way we haven't heard you at this point. So we really appreciate you getting engaged and involved with us.
Great. Thank you so much.
No problem. And it looks like everyone else who is on this call currently is actually agency staff. So it looks like we're missing a handful of people from our signup list. And I'm hoping that people didn't have trouble with the Zoom or anything like that. I guess we'll just go back to Ariselli one more time, one more shot. See if you're there. If you're able to call in. And besides that, it looks like we are out of people to testify. Oh, David, you're on mute.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone who provided their feedback and comments tonight. You know, as I think we said at the beginning of the hearing, you know, what we're really like, hoping to do is to compile the feedback and comments and post those up on our website. You know, the CCDF state plan is somewhat of a backward-looking document. It's sort of just, you know, it's where the feds ask you, the federal government asks you to report on policies as they are. And I think we heard a lot of great ideas of where we want to go forward as a state. So I think we're also wanting to publish a companion document that captures some of the forward-looking ideas, even if not all of those are able to be captured in the framework of the state plan template that we get from the federal government. Remy, why don't you and I just stay online, just in case anyone else shows up in the next, you know,
30 minutes.
And, but, you know, I think we'll, we should let other folks move on with their evenings. But again, just a big, big thank you to everyone. Comments are also open on the website. I'm also happy for, if you want to just submit a letter directly to Remy or myself, so just whatever works best for providing the feedback. And again, we really think of this as a, not the end of the conversation, but just, you know, a part, a part of an ongoing and continuing conversation with all of you. So really, very much appreciate making the, the time tonight, because, you know, we know there's a lot of important work and issues that the plan covers. And it really strikes at the heart of, you know, questions that make such a big difference for children, families in the state. So just a big thank you to everyone. So how about the two of us? We'll stick around, Remy, and just in case anyone shows up late.
Thank you for joining our CCDF public hearing today. We really appreciate everyone who made time on their Tuesday evening to come and submit feedback on our childcare and development plan. Public comment period will be closing on June 1st. So if you have any written comment that you would like to share, please send that to remy.watts@state.or.us. This information is also available on the website, and I will be posting that link with our YouTube video. This information is also available on the website, and I will be posting that link with our YouTube video. Once again, thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We greatly value your feedback, and we will see you next time.